Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, May 29, 2024. Present this evening, we have Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chanacki, Clerk, Richard Clark, Member, David Durgan, Member, myself, Guy Horn, Chairman, and we have William Scanlon, our Town Planner. First item on the agenda is a note to everyone that the meeting is being recorded. And second item on our agenda, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have approval of minutes from May 8th and May 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to be accepted in minutes for the May 8th meeting as recorded.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that there be a change or correction or modification. On page three, it may have been my error, it says, "Richard Clark stated the current master plan was written in 2020." It's 2000.
Okay.
And I take responsibility for that. I might have confused the dates. I apologize if that's the case.
Okay. Is that the only change?
That would be for me, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I amend the motion.
Sure.
I amend the motion to read that we accept the meeting minutes from the May 8th, 24th meeting as recorded with the one correction that the master plan was actually written, the current master plan is written in 2000 instead of the year 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I am unanimous. They have two copies here. I'm going to pass it around so you can get them signed off.
Oh, I didn't break mine. Hey, Mr. Trish. When did this go in? This is like Big Brother.
Yeah, George Orwell. He was overexposed.
Okay, next set of minutes would be from May 20th.
It's a short meeting.
Maybe May 20th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May 20th?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll have to abstain, I was not present.
And myself also was not present, so it'll be just the three of you gentlemen.
I've got a copy here.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Second.
So three yes and two abstentions. And if we can get those over, I missed the call again.
I got one copy of the 8th here, the 20th, right?
No, no, we already got them. We already got them. Put that away, Mr. Clark, please.
Okay.
We're going right here.
All right.
Sorry.
Put it away, put it away.
I don't want to get overconfused.
Not a problem.
There we go. You can go right back in this folder when you're done. Thank you. All right, we get the minutes. Any other plans still? We have none?
Correct.
Okay, next we're on to our discussion of the master plan grant application. I think we have some guests on Zoom, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so who would like to start the discussion?
I guess we can ask Trish. Hi, Trish.
Hi, guys.
Are you with tonight? It's not many.
You get me, I'm pinching because the rest, Dominique and Mike and some of the rest of the team are actually in your old Haunting Brown's building out in Warren, working on the master plan workshop there. So you get me tonight.
Okay, excellent. So, as you know, we're very interested in submitting this grant application for the master plan. And we're wondering how far you've gotten in terms of preparing a scope of work and an estimate, and how you see the process actually sort of working out as we go forward.
Sure, so we've done these before. What Dominique's proposal is, kind of looking at, is she being the ultimate strategist? There's an opening right now for the Community One Stop Grants, which is the state's one real big offering for a number of grant opportunities. It all goes through the same portal. A lot of those are planning grants, and I think the one that she's hoping that will fit best for you guys is the rural development planning grant. I think you guys fit within that, within the parameters of that. We've scoped, developed a scope of work which would be one single phase. We've actually done this before where we've done master plans, as they're doing in Warren tonight, where they're phased because of the funding. It's actually preferable to do it all in one phase, and we're asking the one set of questions, we do one big survey, we do the workshops in a very thoughtful way, we do it in a phased approach. It's a little bit more, a little bit more disconnected. So we'd like to, our preference is to submit one proposal that goes into the Community One Stop Portal that's actually due next week, on June 5th, that we would submit, actually I think she's hoping, so you would just submit the proposal, we can help you develop the scope of work and do that submittal. You get bonus points in the Community One Stop application if you have a match. So she's scoped it up currently at about $145,000 for the total project as this one single phase. It, we work with a master plan implementation, a master plan committee, and hopefully that committee is set up, so the sooner that's set up, the more we look like we're ready to hit the ground running when the grants are awarded. Again, it's preferable if the town has a match, we might be able to, CMRPC, and I haven't had a chance to actually, just back from vacation, to see if we might be able to come to the table with part of the match. So 10% match gets you bonus points, so that would be almost $15,000 if the town were able to commit to seeking that or being able to put that forward toward the grant. We would score better, and we'd have a much greater likelihood of success. What we would do is help you, you know, help them put forth the application. If the award is done, it would come to the town for our efforts in helping you write it, and I think as many of you know, you're able to directly contract with us, we'd ask you to sign a memorandum of understanding that you would then contract with us to do the master plan. We've gotten burned before where we've written a grant proposal and then they, somebody else has swooped in and done, I've done it for our town. So we're trying to, trying to make the most of our effort in putting in the time and energy into the grant application and working with you. So it will demonstrate readiness to have consultants already selected, so it, you know, it definitely helps to say, you know, we've already got a scope of work from CMRPC, they will be our selected consultant, we have a master plan. So the more ready you look, the more likely you are to actually have a greater likelihood of success. So it would be ideal if the town were able to vote to create a master plan steering committee before the submittal on June 5th. So that's probably a decision the select board would need to make to appoint a committee. We would work with that committee closely, it becomes a pretty, a pretty tight relationship that we developed with that committee. We work with them on a regular basis, almost monthly in time, doing the outreach for the master plan to engage the community, to really get genuine feedback and engagement and solicit input from the, from the community, really make the plan your own. We don't want this to look like Westbrook Field's plan or anybody else's, we want this to be the Town of Dudley's plan. It will obviously build on the 2000, your previous master plan, which I think is 2000?
Yes.
You know, we'll look at that one, we'll take into all consideration all of the earlier planning documents that have been done for the town, your recent open space plan, a lot of the other plans that, oh my God, I feel like every other email is coming from Bill in my emails right now, for economic development, or gateway plans, or community development block grants. But you guys have really been very active, and I think that really goes, will play that out in the application, just showing your commitment to planning and moving forward with the master plan is a very good next step for you guys. I think that's kind of our intent. We've got a couple, the Town of Dudley is also interested in doing something similar. If for some reason, we're presented with an interesting scenario this year, typically the Community One Stop applications come out about the same time. There's another, another avenue that we can pursue if, which is, which takes on a different strategy. The Energy and Environmental Affairs Office of, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has what's called a Planning Assistance Grant, which is really meant to foster good planning, sustainable planning within our communities. They have a grant that usually opens up about now, and they're, we're usually hustling to try and get applications into both of these. Right now, it hasn't actually been released, so we're not sure the timing on it, whether it's because of the budget at the State House or what. But we could also potentially submit an application to that. The maximum on that is $50,000 and requires a 25% match. So that's how Warren is moving forward now, they got an Energy and Environmental Affairs grant, they have $50,000, I think it's, I think this is correct, and then there's $12,500 that they were able to bring to the table to make that match. So that would be a phased approach, we would be able to work on some phases of the master plan, and then we'd go back and seek funding for future phases, probably through the same program. We've done that in, in a couple towns, we've kind of drafted and started with some funding of their own and then used that. Hopedale used that and did it kind of in a phased approach. So we're comfortable with both, it's actually preferable to use the one phase, kind of seamless process, but we could do that. So if we feel like our application's not as strong as we would like it to be, we could submit for that opportunity as well.
Excuse me if I may. And the, the match on that one was 25,000?
25%.
That's 25%.
25%.
The maximum that you can ask for from EEA, 50,000, you'd have to come to the table. The total project amount would be 62,500, so you'd have to come to the table with $12,500. And some of that, so EEA would allow, I believe I'm correct, so it would allow some of that match to be in the form of, like if Bill's that in those meetings, we can count Bill's salary as part of that match. So the time that he sits in that, that would be counted. That's not the case for the Community One Stop, that has to be a cash match.
So our Board of Selectmen meet again on June 3rd?
Correct.
Are we on the agenda at all?
Yes.
We are. As, on the agenda as what?
Well, master plan.
Master plan?
Yes.
Okay. I know we have another issue pending with them, so.
I haven't seen the agenda yet, but I've asked half a master plan.
So then our put would be to them, to find some funding and create a committee.
Well, I think, Trish, as I understand it, the Planning Board would create the committee, right? Because the Planning Board is in charge of creating the master plan?
Yeah, I guess that's, that's, it's kind of up to you guys, who would, who would establish that committee? Is that something that the Planning Board can establish? Or is that something that you feel the Select Board needs to establish? And I think that's, you know, a matter of how the Town of Dudley wants to establish that. Obviously, you know, populating that committee is not going to happen overnight, you're, you know, we can get, we can share with you, and I'm sure Bill has some models of this, the charter for a master plan, who would be likely candidates to, to sit on the map, be nominated or appointed to a master plan committee.
If I may, just looking at the master plan for 2000, prepared for the Dudley Planning Board by the Dudley Master Plan Committee, it does not mention the Selectmen as such in terms of as a body, if you will. I'm not sure the, how this board was constituted, it may have been a member here who was a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure what those people might have been.
I think John Brier was and Mark.
John Brier was part of that.
Right.
I don't think any of those people were.
There is a gentleman who's now in the Economic Development Committee, Mark Mazzarotti?
Mazzarotti.
Yes, and the other names, I'm not familiar enough to know what they might have been in 2000.
Well, under the master plan statute, the Planning Board has the responsibility for creating the master plan.
Right, and Board of Selectmen have the money.
Right. So it's a check and balance.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That sounds right. You know, I think that does sound right. So you guys could establish the committee, again, you don't have to appoint it, you can, you know, but establish the committee, so that demonstrates intent and, and commitment to moving forward with the process. And then on the, at the Select Board meeting, you would then ask them to consider a contribution to the match that would also bolster. You can go to it without a match, but those bonus points, because as we know, even coming from our region, it's going to be pretty competitive this year.
Okay. So once we establish the committee, we could then, we could then put public notice and ask for volunteers from the public to, to join the committee if they are so interested in?
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, we can send you kind of, different towns will do it differently, but you know, kind of suggestions about who might populate that committee. Obviously, you want somebody from the Planning Board on that committee, obviously good to have somebody from the Select Board, you know, some of the other boards on town, even residents or businesses at large from the town might be good. And I think that's a discussion you don't have to have tonight or anything, but the charge is really just to kind of oversee and, and work with the consultant, CMRPC, toward the, the development of the, the master plan and including the, you know, working with us around the community engagement, which is really a big part of it, but also, you know, reviewing documents, providing edits, you know, ground truthing the document and so forth.
The previous, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the previous committee was a five. Is that a, you've got a working number, or is that a suggestion?
That's a great number. You don't want to have the limitations on quorum, you know, stifling the advancement of the, you know, the movement of the committee. So I think that five is a great number. And they can, they can bring in and they can seek, you know, comments from, from other members of the community as well. But they're the really the ones who are going to kind of work with us, kind of be the, the on-the-ground folks who tell us about the, the events that we might be able to promote the survey at, or how we might best engage the community based on, you know, what's going on, what the tenor of the community is, and what the sentiments are currently.
And Bill's an ex-officio member.
Yeah, no, Bill, Bill is going to be our point of contact. You know, we send him documents and say, here's the survey, can you put it up on the website? His attendance, it makes it so much smoother having somebody from the staff there.
Okay. Thank you.
And Trish, how long do you think the plan would take for you to prepare?
I think, in my mind, it's probably 18 months. I think that, you know, we, we've been, we could do it in less than that, but I think it, to rush it is, does everybody a disservice. I think it's probably better, you know, if this funding comes out and is made available in the fall, it gives us probably through December of 2026, is that right? Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark. The, there's, the editing and the finalization of the plan and the community outreach is really the important stuff, listening to, to the community and kind of, you know, trying to take the, the community's views and articulate that in a way that rings true to you. You know, somebody may say, the street, the sidewalks look great, and then somebody else, and we have to make sense of all of that in a way that makes sense for the, the master plan committee, so that they feel like they can get behind it. Because if you can't get behind it, then it's not going to, it's not going to do anybody any good. We've, there's a lot of kind of transparency, we'll set up websites so that, you know, the community is engaged along, they can always log on and find out, you know, where the survey is, or what community events are happening, or when the master plan committee is meeting. We've got social media, you know, to let people, you know, who are connected to the community that way know what's going on. You know, as you, as you well know, a master plan includes a certain, you know, has, by prescription by the, the chapter 40, certain pieces. We've actually added to that, the Town of Spencer is looking for a cloplancy chapter, you know, we could add, you know, there are pieces that can be added to some of this. We want to make sure we hit all the marks that you guys are looking for.
Sounds like it's a doable plan.
I think it is. I think it really is. I mean, again, you guys have done a great job of setting a tone for planning and moving forward, not just sitting back and waiting for, for what walks in the door in terms of an, of, of development proposals, but really looking to, to bring it all together in terms of open space and economic development and all the pieces of the, of a community that really need to kind of be integrated, you know. This will look at town services and facilities, and transportation, open space and natural resources, cultural and historic, economic development, and all of those pieces. And I think, you know, as old as you may think a 2000 plan is, there are towns out there who have, who have much older plans that are way out there, and it, there's been so much that's happened since 2000. I mean, the world is a very different place, Dudley is a very different place than it was in 2000.
So for tonight, would you be looking for the Planning Board to adopt a resolution to create the master plan, to complete a master plan and create a steering committee?
Yes.
So moved.
That would help us a long way in, in moving forward. I think the other piece, and I'm not sure whether this is you guys or this is the Select Board, but the other piece is to consider that memorandum of understanding where we would be the designated consultant if we were to, is that what that is?
We have, we have it here already.
Right. Dominique sent that as one of the documents earlier today, I believe that's the case.
So if we, if we vote on it, it's, it's already here, printed up, I, I don't have a problem if we vote on it, I can sign it tonight, and then we can just give it back to you.
It is, there's two signatures required, one is the Chair of the Planning Board, and the other is Janet, who's Executive Director of CMRPC. It's boilerplate, I assume, that's what all the other towns are likely looking at as well.
I mean, I can understand the situation where, you know, like she said, what happened to them in the past, where they go through the work of getting the grant set up, and then they give the job to some other consulting company. I think it's, you know, it discovers them, and I think it, it's, it's fair business, you know.
Getting three proposals before you accept something like this is usually fair business. Just blindly accepting one is not fair business, in my opinion. That's just my two cents.
What's the Board's pleasure?
To Mr. Edmiston's point, again, the email that was sent this morning is one that we haven't really, have at all had an opportunity to look at. Dominique, when she sent her email this morning, addressed Mr. Horn and myself and Bill, and the other members of the Board were not included, I've since sent that to them, but only while we were sitting here, so I know they haven't had a chance to really look at this. So lacking that, that meeting on the 3rd, can that be a joint meeting? So we could have a meeting and then look at this in terms of going forward with it at that time?
Well, I can post an agenda, so the Planning Board can meet.
Right.
And I'll see whether the Selectmen want to make that a joint meeting.
Or we could meet in another room.
Correct, so it would either be a joint meeting with them or a separate Planning Board meeting.
And then we're on their agenda.
Yes.
Okay. So that would give us, all of us, an opportunity to look at this and, to Mr. Edmiston's point, be informed as opposed to kind of hitting it on the, a little bit on the blind side right now.
So, Trish, just to dot the i's and cross the t's on the, on the financial thing one more time. So you're, you're saying your estimate for this, for this entire study was $145,000, as I understood it?
That's correct.
And you were saying that for the grant that we're trying to get, that we would need to provide, the Town of Dudley would be required to provide some kind of matching funds. What would the amount for the Town of Dudley be looking to provide here?
Up to 10%, $14,500.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and again, I haven't had the chance, Janet's just been back from vacation, there's a chance that we might be able to bring district local technical assistance, that's to the, to the, we might be able to provide some of that match. I don't think, it'll be tough for us to provide all $15,000 of that, or $14,500 of that, but I think we might be able to come up with some part of that as part of the, you know, CMRPC's contribution to this. Because we feel this is so important to have our communities have active and engaged master plans. I think we've done that on a couple different occasions, where the, our Physical Development Committee, which is the, the committee that allocates our district local technical assistance, which is funding that comes out of the legislature, it's just not something we can rely on, though to be honest with you, we've received it every 15 years I've been here. We just always have to go to our legislators and, and make sure it's in the budget, and it's currently in the budget as is, we're hoping that it's actually increased, then we can do more with those funds. We've, I think the, the Town of Dudley and a number of our, most of our communities have benefited in one way or another. So this, this is an allowable match for the, the Community One Stop.
So Mr. Edmiston, you think if we got two more quotes, we would get two other companies that would be willing to do this for less than $14,500, or?
It's not less than $14,500, it's less than $145,000. Our, our portion may be $14,500, but the overall is, I'm not necessarily stating that, I just think that we had an idea that was brought up roughly a week ago to look into, or maybe two weeks ago, two weeks ago, 8th? Maybe a little bit before that, call it a month ago or so, and then we had the meeting on the 8th, and we were informed about this deadline, and now it's a rush. We really haven't had a discussion, we really don't know. I mean, we just heard that some towns have master plans that are older than, of the year 2000. How old are they, 30, 40 years? I mean, what is the actual necessity? Have we talked about all this in due form? I don't necessarily think so. So that's a little bit where my hesitation is.
To that point, just one, one bit of information. The plan is dated 2000, but some of the information in there is from the 1990 census. So instead of 24 years old, you're looking at almost 35-year-old information, if you will. So, you know, and if you look at the population, just population alone, that's not, this is not Dudley of 2000, it's not Dudley of 1990.
I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that it'd be nice to get some background information. Do most of the towns or fellow, or the municipalities in the Commonwealth have master plans that are 50 years old? Now we're kind of putting in perspective exactly what the need for it is. If we're way behind the eight ball, then that puts more of a sense of urgency on it. That's information that I don't have right now, that's all I'm saying.
And again, to your point, obviously, when we started the discussion, I don't, I wasn't aware, for example, of the deadlines.
Correct.
And that's all come up very suddenly, and as you look at the calendar, it's like the day after tomorrow. So, you know, how do we handle that? And do we have an option to educate ourselves to this?
And this may be the best path, this may be the perfect path right now, I'm not trying to put that into question, but instead of voting on it tonight, let's hold off until the 3rd, or, or, you know, whenever we can at the next moment, so give us a chance to look at this and to all have an informed opinion before we meet again and discuss, that's all I'm saying.
And I would submit that there's a couple of things I've been able to send to you this evening, and in addition to that, a resource that you might find useful is the CMRPC website. And I would also mention, it's not a commercial announcement, but we have a relationship with CMRPC. They have been very helpful over the years in a number of capacities, Mr. Scanlon, most recently, working with them with regards to economic development in the Town of Dudley, which we sorely need. They've also assisted with, not that long ago, the open space in our creation committee, and I'm not sure that I haven't missed at least three or four other occasions. But they have been a great resource in the past, and I have no doubts that they will be in the future.
End of commercial.
Okay.
I think Richard's right. We, just for updating our website, we're very proud of it. You can actually go, visit the website and look to see, pick any town, and see if we have their, their master plan and what the date of those master plans are. A great way to kind of see how your neighbors are doing around the region with respect to kind of planning efforts.
And you could very easily, excuse me for interrupt, but you could very easily with that website, look at towns of comparable size, or those that we might think to be of comparable size, and see where they stand and what they're doing or what they have done.
Will do.
Is this grant an annual grant, that comes out every year?
Yeah, I was going to say, so, I mean, best case scenario is you guys establish the committee tonight, you vote on the memorandum, the town puts together the match. tonight, you vote on the memorandum, the town puts together the match, we get awarded and we, we get this thing rolling as soon as the, the, the awards are made. You know, in, another scenario is we wait a year and, or we look for funding from another source. I mean, we're, we're here with you. We're, you know, we, if we know you guys are interested in a master plan, whether it's, you know, the application that's put in next week or next year, we're, we're here to work with you to develop the scope that works for you guys and a timeline that works for you guys, you know, and we'll find the resources to help you make it happen.
So then we'll, we'll have our meeting on the third.
Sure, I'll post the meeting for Monday night.
We can have it on, on another room if we have to and then come in and talk with the board of selectmen and see what their, what their pleasure is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for Trish, if you, just real quick.
Sure.
So just, my experience is more in the design world, architecture, construction. I know sometimes when you go to engineers and get proposals, there is a scope of work, more or less, that tells you what you're getting with that proposal. And then there are times where you get requests for additional fees, change orders in the construction world. What are the odds of those things coming up when you're putting together a master plan?
We have not done that, to my knowledge. We're, we're, we may extend it, we may find that, you know, something out of strange or out of the ordinary happens. We may ask to extend it a month or so because of extenuating circumstances. The, the, you know, snowstorm after snowstorm kept the committee from meeting. COVID happens, we extended a couple around that. We may extend it, but we, I, to my knowledge, we've not gone and asked for a change of scope and increased the, the amount. We, not in my, the only one I think I've extended was with Bill just recent, you know, I think it was just the one that, around the gateway plan, because he had funds that we were gonna turn around and change the actual scope. The scope is not gonna change. It's gonna be a master plan, we're gonna deliver it to you in the format that you guys agree to. Again, the, we won't change the, the pricing on that.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so then we'll plan on having another discussion on Monday night with the selectmen and see if we can get the match. In the meantime, you can consider the MO.
If, if one, I'm happy to, to attend on, on Monday night to, to join you guys for that discussion. Bill, if you can just let me know and I'm happy to be there. Dominique, one of us will be there and help explain kind of the value of a master plan and some of the strategy around getting you the funds.
So the board of selectmen usually meet at 6:30, so we would, we should meet a little bit before that, so we're not interfering with their, with their starting, because I don't know where we're gonna, where we're gonna place on the agenda. So if we could meet at 6:00 PM on Monday.
Okay.
And then have our meeting and then?
We'll have to make sure we have a room available.
Sure.
Is that all right with everybody to meet at?
I might be a little bit late, depends on traffic.
I may, or may I'll be here. I'll be coming back from Maine, so.
I won't be there. I have a, I'll be in Colorado that night, so.
Oh, wow. Well, we should do this all offside there.
All right, so we'll plan on doing it, starting at six o'clock and then we'll go through the board of selectmen's meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
And figure out where we fit into the agenda.
So Mr. Chairman, if we had Trish or Dominique coming, we'd want them to be with us at six if they were?
Yeah, just to get the game plan so that when we go in and talk to the board of selectmen, we're all on the same page, if that's okay?
Okay. So Trish, you can decide who on your end can attend.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, plan on six o'clock with the planning board.
Cool. And hopefully by that time I'll have had a chance to talk to Janet about if we can also contribute to the match for you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Trish.
Take care.
I'll let you go on about your business. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to the planner, this is on the capital improvement, isn't there some funding or some monies that have been earmarked for something like this, a capital improvement?
Well, it was, it's on the capital improvement plan for 100,000.
Right.
But there was never any appropriation made. It's just, you know, the CIP is just a list of needs.
How, how long has that been in place, I ask?
I'd say about three years.
Two years. And that was with the approval of the board of selectmen?
Well, the capital improvement committee prepares that plan.
Capital improvement committee approved that, so it did not have the blessing of the board of selectmen.
I'm not sure whether the selectmen actually vote on it or not after it, it's, you know, prepared by the CIP committee.
All right.
But now, now she's saying if we were lucky enough to get this grant, then it could be as little as only 14,500 dollars and maybe even less than that if, if CMRPC can come through with some additional funding that's available to them, that they could basically help, help that match be lower.
So, you know, to Dan's point, the other option is to go out to bid. CMRPC is exempt from procurement because contracts between intergovernmental bodies are exempt from chapter 30B, so that's why you can go to them directly and not have to go out to bid. But if you do want to go out to bid, you have to prepare a request for proposals, issue it, receive proposals from different firms, evaluate those proposals and pick the firm that you think has the best credentials to do that work for you. So that's, you know, it's additional work, but if that's the way you want to go, that's perfectly fine. The advantage of going with CMRPC is that, one, it's easier and it demonstrates readiness to proceed, which is an important criteria on the grant application. If you've got an understanding with CMRPC to do the plan, then.
Right, I mean, if you go out, if you go out to bid, it's gonna be at least another year before you could even apply for a grant.
If you don't do it this year, you have to wait till next year. Although she did mention that other program, which is a 25% match.
Right, but it's only a $50,000 grant versus?
Right, so that essentially would be two or three, three years worth of application.
Versus a 120,000 plus dollar grant.
Right, so higher match amount.
A $130,000, yeah. Okay.
This grant's not guaranteed though, right?
No, if you get it, it is. Well. They're not gonna renege on it, they're gonna give you the money so you can go do the.
That's the tricky part, is.
Don't, don't you have to choose us for this grant?
Right, but I mean, like if you, if we had, if we, if we, if we're able by some miracle to get all the ducks in a row and we were to get selected and Central Mass, I don't know, she, you know, maybe she'll tell us on, on Monday night how much Central Mass Regional Planning could come forward with. I mean, if they could come forward with two or three or $4,000 and it's.
Sure.
Whatever. So I mean, like, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. If you can get a master plan for $10,000, go for the $10,000 master plan. I mean, it's, it's not gonna be a bad master plan coming from Central Mass Regional Planning that we've dealt with them as long as I've been on the planning board, which is almost 20 years, and everything we've ever gotten from them has been very, very well done. They have some of the best, you know, people in the business for doing what we, what we need to be, to be done, you know, to provide this service. And that's why they, you know, that's why we pay a, we pay a yearly fee to them, which is, what is it now? It's around $4,000?
About $4,000.
You know, we give about $4,000 a year to Central Mass Regional Planning to be our consultants on this, that kind of thing, so.
So it is up to this board to decide which way to go, whether to go with CMRPC or just have them write the application and then if you get the award, go out to bid and hire a private consulting firm, so.
Okay.
And Bill, to the best of your knowledge, are there local firms who are capable and competent enough to do a master plan?
Well, local meaning statewide, sure. And we've used VHB for some of our engineering work. They're very capable and there are others that are equally as qualified, so.
All right, move on to our agenda. Standard business, discussion status before unfinished construction of, acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets including Pierpont Estates, Strackey Hill Estates, Country Beer Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farms Estates, Lyons Estates, Sophie's Way. Do we have anything on those sections?
To the chair, through the chair, Bill, Tobin Farms in terms of betterment, where does that stand? Is that moving at all?
You know, I, I sent Jeff Walsh an email today asking him where he stands in terms of preparing a scope of work. So we need to go out to bid for that work. And I forget what the betterment amount was, was it 400,000?
Oh, Tobin Farms, yes.
So I think to actually do the work, we'd have, you know, go out to bid and have a contract to do that work.
Now Eisenhower, there's still, we had some thoughts that we would reach out to the residents and find out.
Right, that's still the game plan.
That's still the plan?
We're still looking for an estimate for the completion of the street or whatever punch list items.
Yeah.
We know that the sewer station, sewer pump station, I think it's over 20, something like that.
I guess my only concern is that things don't get better over time, so whatever would have cost you 10 years ago, it's gonna cost you a lot more 10 years down.
Prices are going up.
Well, they're not going down, that's for sure. Bidenomics hasn't quite made it to Central Massachusetts, so, well, that was political, I'm sorry. So in any event, the sooner the better on these things, I think, for the people involved and for the town as a whole.
Okay. Next one on our agenda, inspections and actions associated with site plans. We have Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue, ABND 24, Oxford Avenue, Stevens Mill and the solar project at the landfill.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't know if I have to recuse myself with this, but with regards to Legacy Landing, one of my new neighbors told me yesterday, I believe it was, that he was going to be in attendance at this meeting. I don't see him here, so either there was some confusion as to the time and date, and I thought I told him seven, so I guess he may have changed his mind. Although I believe one or two may have visited you at some point, Bill?
Yeah, I did meet with somebody. I gave him a copy of the plan. So they had some concerns about impacts on their properties.
Yeah, there are, I know there, I've talked to a number of them, I walk through there pretty much every day, frankly, and pushing the grandson, grandson, and they have a number of concerns, a number of issues. I think some of them are being addressed, but I think they're a little concerned in terms of the process. Things are taking a lot longer than they expected.
I think that's a private issue. I think that's more of a private issue.
Oh, it is, it is, definitely, definitely. But they are residents of Dudley and again, the gentleman did indicate he thought he might be coming to the meeting and we do have option here for citizens' comments, so.
I did get a letter in today, and I apologize if you didn't have a chance to look at it yet, but I've included it in your binder. It's under, um, standard business. It's a letter from Father Daniel Marino of St. Anthony's, a head of a church, discussing some drainage impacts on their property, which butts Country Club Acres. He submitted a couple of photographs showing some water impacts on their property. And I don't know whether you would like to discuss this tonight or hold it off for another two weeks, but anyway, I just wanted to bring your attention that I came in. I, you know, I just got it today when I came in to work, so.
Okay.
I did ask the highway superintendent to go out, take a look at it. He didn't see anything out there today, because it's been kind of dry.
Right, yeah.
So he thought the next rainstorm, he'd go out and take a look and see whether he notices any, any runoff impacts from the developments that might be affecting the church property.
Okay.
But I, at first I had heard that they might have been impacted by the development.
Okay.
Do you have any other thought about what you want to do in regard to this letter?
Somebody go out there and verify it first.
I think pictures verify it.
You don't know if that's coming off their, their asphalt or the other road.
Right, so I think somebody does need to evaluate, and I think when it rains, it's the best time to do it.
Right, but would it be, would it be the highway superintendent or would it, would we need to contact Jeff Walsh?
Uh, I think the highway superintendent could, could evaluate the situation, yeah.
Determination, okay.
Yeah, and if he sees it, contact Jeff.
Okay.
That sounds pretty simple.
Well, if he confirms it, we contact the developer, right? Well, politically, I don't want to fix it.
What did we have in the plan in terms of storm water management? There must have been something in there, right? I know we waived a lot of things, but I suspect that something survived.
Well, the conservation commission normally would be reviewing a stormwater plan.
Okay, so there should be something on record, I would think, and.
Right.
Maybe someone, as an engineer, could look at what is specified and then look at what's on, you know, the reality of it and tell us it is or it isn't what it's supposed to be.
I mean, drainage has been a, a problem up there all along. We've had a number of issues.
It's wet.
With, with water runoff.
Yeah, looked like a lake one time.
And I know they've, you know, done their, their best to try to contain the runoff, but maybe, you know, something has broken down, needs to be repaired or something like that.
Okay.
Just, first question, if this is a item possibly from the conservation commission, did they get a copy of this letter and the photos?
It was addressed to the planning board, so.
Can we forward them?
Sure.
At least we'll give some kind of a heads-up letter for the planning board, as in a potential issue.
Okay.
And then my second comment would be that water's basically kind of simple, it flows downhill. So if this is a low spot, I mean, water's going to, it's gonna gather there, it's gonna puddle there. The question is, if on the approved site plan, what is it showing for the area? Are, are the current grades the same that are shown in the plans or did something get altered during construction or get changed during construction? I'm not sure who would be responsible for that. I'm expecting the inspectional services, right, to be in charge of something like that?
Right.
Do they get a copy of this letter? Can we forward them to, and let them be aware that they need to double check grades, double check? I mean, for all, no, there could be, there could be a catch basin missing back there, that could be a retention pond, or that just could be, should have been a hill maybe, who knows? We have the plans in front of us.
It's gonna, though.
Good, I will forward those ideas along.
Thank you.
All right. Got to our agenda. Stevens Mill. Yeah, anything else on, on those items? I think, I thought we had some items coming up on the landfill, solar.
Yes, I did send you a couple of the landfill reports.
Yeah, and then there was also, I think there was a couple, or, parking lot, I thought there was a couple of vouchers, invoices, invoices or vouchers that we need to, yeah, so we'll get that at the end.
Sure, did you have any comments on the landfill reports?
I didn't, I didn't have anything off the top of my head.
Okay.
Just one quick comment, that's a little smartass, but possibly appropriate. We have from Weston and Sampson, a, a report from a site visit with Dudley landfill solar. And we have the same from Quinn Engineering. One is more or less complete, one is a couple sentences. I'm not sure what the fee difference for each one of these is, but they can both be called the same thing, a site visit report, but they're both very different. And that extends not only to site plan reports, meeting minutes, but also to master plans. So it's always a good idea to know what you're getting, what you're paying for.
So I'm going to add the.
Two different projects?
Doesn't matter, they're still the same basic thing, aren't they?
Okay. I thought you meant the, the same project.
No, they're just, they're both basically site visit reports from two different firms. And to me, there's a world of difference in each one of them. I'm not sure what the price difference is, what we're paying for each one of them, but my point being is that you can request a site visit report from one firm and get one thing, if another firm, you get another completely different thing. One may be satisfactory, one may not. It's good to know what you're getting before you start to commit 145,000 or 14,500 dollars.
Have they done all the wiring for this landfill yet? Is that hooked up? Is that hooked up, electrical, right?
I don't know.
They must be very close, they've been working on it for a while.[1772.45]
The, the new utility poles are in going down, what is it, Indian Road or Indian Drive?
Oh, yeah.
The poles are there, but they're not, they're not connected yet.
There's no wires yet.
Oh.
There's a pile of dirt they removed. What kind of dirt was that?
That's actually a good question. Where did that pile go?
Yeah, what did they do with that pile? That was dumped, that was dumped there for a reason. Huh?
This site's a tier one classification for PFOS. If they're moving this dirt, where is that dirt going? That's kind of responsibility of the town. And you, Bill, you also mentioned that Mr. Bukowski said that he's not going to deal with that catch basin, right? That's overflowing?
Right, that was a while ago, I believe.
Yeah, it was like a couple of months ago.
Yes.
So who's, who's responsible for that? Did we send that to Matt Morrow, the consultant for conservation? Or, I know John Root, his name's on it, but he doesn't respond to any of my emails. That's kind of a big deal.
So that's a town facility then, correct?
Yeah.
So that would be the highway department then that would be responsible for managing that site? Has it been a problem recently?
Well, every time it rains, it's like a little river that goes right into that Niger Pond, which goes into Carpenter Pond, which goes into Packard Pond. Moves the water all around.
Blue hair in the road. Yeah, the thing's always flowing, overflowing since they dug it up.
Oh, will the highway superintendent know about that and see if he can?
Yeah, it's ever since they changed the topography of that middle section.
Yeah.
That's when I noticed it.
From the solar field, are they going to fix all the ruts that they made?
Excuse me?
All the ruts around it. Like it looks like a monster truck drove around that place.
The landfill?
Oh, yeah. I'll leave a million pictures of it.
It's the, the, the permanent fencing isn't up yet, correct?
Yeah, but that place got destroyed.
So they would probably do the landscaping and then put the fencing up at the last stage.
Well, they're supposed to use low impact vehicles on that. It looks like a monster truck drove around that place.
Again, I'll check with Rob Bukowski on that because he's managing the construction of the landfill property. So if there's an issue there, I'll have him address it.
Anything for the planners, please, Bill?
Couple of things. We are working on the grant application for the Fun Zone. That's due in July. It's called the Park, P-A-R-C program. CMRPC is writing the application on our behalf. And Radnor and Associates is doing the design of the playground. As you may recall, we had the public meeting here in the selectmen's room with a lot of Dudley children, selecting the kinds of equipment they would like to see there. The big winner was some kind of a water feature. So Radnor is designing a splash pad for the property as well as other playground equipment. So they're busy working on that, you know, fleshing out the actual equipment and the final or the, the proposed design of the, of the park. That's due, I think, in early July, the first week in July, I think. Our working budget is seven hundred thousand dollars. The town can get a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And then we have to come up with two hundred thousand dollars as, as its local match.
But we already have money raised for that, don't we?
What's that?
We already have some amount of money raised for that.
There's some of that, so that probably, I'm not sure how that would be done. It'd either be a borrowing item or, you know, an appropriation item at the fall town meeting for that.
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know how that would be financed at this point, but we should know by town meeting whether that application has been successful. And then if we get the five hundred thousand, then I think that makes a good argument for the town to commit to the other two hundred thousand.
So does CMRPC work with us on that to come up with the grant application? Is that what I'm understanding?
They are working, they're, they're doing the, the non-designed portion, the actual application portion of it. And Radnor's doing.
So they weren't involved with the design at all?
No.
No?
No, Radnor is doing the design.
Thank you.
Bill, that, so when you say we, it's CMRPC and you essentially, they're working on this project?
Yes, and the town administrator and.
Okay.
So it went from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand total?
Excuse me?
It went from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand now?
I don't know where the four hundred came from. We sort of gave.
Playground equipment.
Where the seven hundred came from is that maximum was five hundred thousand dollars and there's a thirty percent match requirement. So we wanted to maximize the state grant, which is five hundred thousand. And to do that, you need around two hundred thousand of local monies. And plus, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So Radnor is comfortable that that's a good working budget to do a nice park up there.
I believe the amount that went before town meeting, and this is going back a while, was something in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. It was less than four hundred, I remember it that much.
Three eighty-four, I think.
Well, it was less than four in any event. I mean, that, those are staggering numbers to begin with, but seven hundred thousand is.
Well, if, if the two hundred thousand is too much for the town to accept, then you'd have to come up with a match that you think the town can agree to and then take things out of the plan that you want to, as critical as other ramps.
And that includes all the plumbing that would have to go there for the water feature?
Bryce, when's that plan going to come out?
Well, it's due first week of July, I think maybe July ninth, so that'd be the second week of July. Hopefully, we'd have something at the end of June to kick around.
Okay.
And if, if, you know, it's not really the planning board's, you know, item, but if there's consensus that it's too expensive, then we'd have to cut back and get to a number that people can agree to.
Who, who is like overseeing that? There's not, that's not overseen by the park?
The selectman would, would be the applicant.
The selectman would be the applicant, okay.
Yeah, how come the Parks and Rec isn't, isn't involved in that? We've got that new department. Aren't you on that? Is that the one you're on?
Excuse me?
Is that the one that you're on? Or you're on, you are on the open space?
Open space, right. We do have a recreation commission. So eventually, this would obviously be an important element for them. I don't know whether they're, you know, fully functional at this point to take on a project like this, but eventually would hope that they would, you know, get up to speed for this kind of thing. The other item is, I don't know whether I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we've submitted an application for the Mill Race Bridge on Brandon Road.
Yeah, I seen that tonight.
Did that come up at the last meeting?
No.
Okay, so again, CMRPC submitted an application. It came out of Representative Neal's office. So it's a federal program. And he had asked all his member communities if they had any projects to submit for what used to be called earmarks. And so we, CMRPC reached out to us to see whether we had any projects. And we quickly hit upon the, the bridge, the temporary bridge. So we have an application that was submitted to the congressman for two and a half million dollars for the Mill Race Temporary Bridge.
That was just a temporary one, right?
Right. And it's, so it's in the appropriations committee in Congress, along with probably millions, thousands of other projects. So it's up, up to the congressional committee to decide which ones are worthy of funding and which aren't. But it's another avenue that we're exploring, trying to get money for that project. And I don't know what the odds are, but at least, you know.
There's no funds forthcoming from the state, so we might as well go to the big guys if we can. And Neal is, I don't know what his seniority is, but it's got to be better than twenty years.
Well, he was chairman of that committee.
Right.
When there was a Democratic majority, so now he's.
Some, I don't know what the proper terminology is.
Some pull.
Some credits in, in his account in terms of maybe moving something forward.
There is that, it's nice to have.
And when you talk about, you know, what, we're talking two million dollars?
Two point five.
I mean, the federal, that'd be, what's that, three seconds of federal government spending? Something like that.
I think he, he had fifty, he was allowed to accept fifteen projects from his communities. So we're one of fifteen within his district alone.
Cross my fingers on that one.
So.
Do you know how long the temporary bridge is supposed to be good for? I mean, how long does the temporary bridge last?
Well, the long range plan is to build a complete span over the French River. And that has been submitted to, and it's been approved by Mass DOT. So it's on the bridge program, but it's kind of a snail's pace. I would guess that's maybe a twelve year kind of horizon.
So does the temporary bridge last that long?
Yes. Yeah.
Twelve years? And that new bridge is going to be what, six point five, I think it said?
Probably, yeah.
Does that two point five come off of that?
Six five will be eight, yes?
Uh huh, yeah, it'll be twelve.
Well, no, I mean, the temporary, temporary bridge would be removed.
Right, I understand.
It'd be one bridge spanning the entire reach, not two separate bridges as exist today.
Well, that would be, I think the residents would be very happy to see that in place, temporary or proven, anything.
I agree.
I'm guessing this bridge is probably right behind the one for Baltimore Harbor, so you've got a good shot.
We're number two on the list.
All we needed was a, one of those large freighters to run into our bridge and we would have been all set.
If we had any shipping coming down the French River, we would have been in better position probably.
Too bad.
All right, was that it for the planners, please, Bill? Okay, thank you very much. Comments from the planning board?
The walking trail is paved.
The walking trail is paved?
Yeah.
That got done, that got done already?
Yep.
Is it open officially?
No, I think it's still closed.
Still closed?
Still closed, but they paved it. Looks very nice.
And it's, Bill, you were saying it was going to be paved like around eight feet wide, is that right?
I think it's eight feet wide, yeah.
It's about eight feet wide.
So as you know, town meeting authorized the selectman entered a lease, which has happened.
Yeah.
So that enabled the contractor to get going on that work right away.
So was the entire, the entire length paved for the one that goes from South Bridge to into West Dudley?
It will go into West Dudley, it won't go all the way to the South Bridge line, I don't think.
Okay, goes into West Dudley and then it starts, but it starts over like by Carpenter, Carpenter Hill Road and goes towards West Dudley?
From the Webster line, from the bridge and at the river down to the town line with Thompson.
Okay.
Question, if I may, Bill, you mentioned you were going to be in Colorado. How long, how long are you going to be there and what are the dates? Can you?
Yeah, I'll be back early Wednesday morning. So I plan to come in Wednesday to fill out, to complete the application for the master plan.
So and you're like this, you're going to be out there for a long time?
No, just a couple of days.
Couple, couple of days?
Please, Friday.
You can go that far, you have to spend some time.
Go on, overstay, I'm welcome.
Any other comments from the planning board?
I've said enough.
I don't think we're going to have any comments from our audience. Okay, so other business, set the next regular scheduled meeting. We had it as June, but now we're going to have it, excuse me, as June twelfth, but now we're going to have it as June third. June third at six P M. And then the next meeting. I guess we, we can see what the agenda looks like for, the third one is only going to be the, the agenda item would just be the, the master plan. And then on the twelfth, if we, we'll have to see if there's agenda items for the twelfth. If there's nothing for the twelfth.
I do have a couple of A and Rs.
You have a couple of A and Rs?
I came in today.
Okay, so then we'll have, we'll have something for the twelfth.
I'll put those on for the twelfth.
All right, thank you. Approval of consultant vouchers, payments and bills. We have one from Quinn Engineering, pre-construction process for housing authority parking lot of eleven hundred ninety-seven dollars. And this would be the report that was very light.
Yep.
Somebody want to make a motion for the approval of the eleven hundred ninety-seven dollars?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve payment to Quinn Engineering company amount of one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm against it.
Or yes, or no?
So this is just an invoice though, right? This isn't like the actual plan that Dan's talking about.
Well, this is an invoice for the two reports they wrote.
So we have the actual reports you were talking about, the two.
Yeah, they're in this invoice.
The one, the one report they wrote.
They were both, they were both in the binder.
They're both.
Right, but this company that we're getting the, they didn't do, they didn't do both reports.
Yes.
Yeah.
There are two from Quinn and there was one from the Weston group.
Yes, for the housing authority, Quinn is doing the construction supervision.
Parking lot, right, but I didn't see anything other than the parking lot.
Do you think?
So green tab, planner plate, one dated five sixteen, one dated five seventeen.
Yeah.
They were in the handouts.
Five seventeen.
Twenty-two, Joshua, please.
Okay. Two page, I thought it was, I thought it was a two page report, not a, two different pages, two different reports. Okay.
We're done. We got other town notices and we have correspondence to consider. Mr. Scalen, I believe we had a communication we sent to the Board of Selectmen dated honor about the sixteenth of April. We had a letter, I believe we sent to the town, the Board of Selectmen on or about the sixteenth of April, correct?
Yes.
And I know the mail is slow, but we had any response from them at this point?
No, I don't have a written response or a response at all.
Well, a written response would be nice. Any response would be appropriate.
So would you like me to add it to the discussion?
Why not? I mean, let's see if the mailman is doing his job and Mr. Sullivan is well acquainted with the post office. He can find, tell us where the snags might be if it's not getting through.
Well, what would the planning board like to come out of that meeting? What is your?
Well, I think there were some questions, as I recall, in the letter. And, and again, I think the letter was understated in some respects. I believe the gist of it was to find out what the role was of the planning board in terms of going forward. Because it looked like, as I understood it, the town administrator pretty much put us out of business as far as the complete streets was concerned and God knows what he has in mind for the planning board.
I don't think the selectmen intended that to happen, so.
Well, they were there and nobody said nay. I mean, silence is consent.
Well, I mean, I think it's, then it's worthwhile having that discussion with them to make sure that everybody's on the same page, so.
I would be, you know, I'd be happy if we gave to the same book, never mind page.
All right, well, the letter stands and, I don't know, the next time maybe we send one, we could receive the question, so we can probably. I don't, but they actually got it.
Any other correspondence, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
I was making a copy of it now. I thought she, it would be in the binder already, but it's not, so. I got an email from a student at Shepherd Hill High School.
Okay.
Who was interested in the complete streets program and raised an issue of sidewalk by the Shepherd Hill campus.
Okay.
And she'd like to talk to us about plans for that location and sidewalks in general. And as soon as we get the, a copy, you can read it for yourself. So I thought I would bring it to your attention and see what your preference would be. And I'm thinking maybe we can invite her into a meeting.
Sure.
Unless you wanted to have her come in.
She wants to be the student representative to the planning board, she can do that.
Of course, at the sidewalk, there is this, where, what are we talking about in terms of side? There is a sidewalk on Dudley Oxford Road.
Right.
That goes up to almost the intersection of Ramswan Road.
Right.
And that it does continue down in the other direction. I believe it goes down to Mason Road approximately.
Right.
The condition of it in some places is not the greatest and it's in asphalt as opposed to cement.
Right.
But I'm not sure what sidewalk she's, she's talking about the sidewalks around the school?
I believe so.
So she wants an improvement on sidewalks?
Okay.
You guys are wildly speculating, there's a letter that'll be here in about fifteen seconds, I mean.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right. And what, we'll get the old lady in and if she can tell us.
No patience.
And then there's also, there's also that other program that the state has run.
State schools or something.
Safe routes to schools.
Safe routes to schools, right. So we could, we could also look at, if, if this is in the immediate area of school, we could look into that also.
I believe there's a two mile radius around. I believe there's a two-mile radius around schools for that program, so that covers quite a distance.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, that's almost Mason Road.
That goes from one school to another school in Dudley.
Yeah. That's a, that's a.
Road right to the high school?
Lot of sidewalk.
You can probably get all the way over to.
I believe they were talking about going, making a path to the high school through that field there, like right where that asphalt truck always is.
Well, that, that, there is the, that's a right-of-way through there right now for the water and sewer lines.
So maybe that's, maybe that's who was talking about it, someone was talking about it.
Oh, yeah, going towards Mason Road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, on Mason Road, it's something left coming towards there.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, and.
Can we read this?
Got it coming, okay.
We're gonna get our way.
I was in the dark, and I thought I was stapling the way in the staple, because we're not in the staple.
So this, this email, originally it went to Michelle, who then passed it on to me, I think.
Thank you so much.
Probably so, because it's something that.
Make sure you have both pages there.
Is within the planning board's domain. So she's, if you want, I'll just read it out loud so people watching the tape can understand, it says, hello, Michelle. My name is Rosalie Knowlton, and I'm a junior at Shepherd Hill Regional High School. I'm emailing you to inquire about the Dudley Clean Streets Policy. I think she means the Complete Streets Policy. And policies surrounding these sidewalks in our town. As these sidewalks become more degraded, students may be less likely to use them as a mode of transportation to and from school. Additionally, the worsening quality of sidewalks surrounding the high school inhibits, inhibits students who choose to use them for extracurricular activities as well. As we speak to you about this issue, we are searching to learn more about it for our civics action project in school. Please email me back to set up a meeting to discuss the issue of sidewalk degradation in Dudley, Mass. Rosalie Norton, Jr., Shepherd Hill Regional High School.
There have been problems with that Dudley Oxford, not too far from the intersection of Ramshorn Road. That sidewalk has been overgrown as far as weeds. I don't know what the current status is, and I believe there's been some degradation of the asphalt, and some weeds actually coming up, if you will, to the surface. I didn't, given the fact that there are a lot of sidewalks in town, it's not a whole lot worse than most of what we have, but I could see where she might find it questionable.
Right, so it's your pleasure to have me invite her to the next, I assume school will be out in a couple of weeks, so.
June thirteenth, last day.
Okay, so I better do it on the twelfth. I don't know what her civics action project is.
Yeah, I was about to ask that.
But maybe there's a resource there that we can tap into, don't we?
Maybe, maybe it's a two thousand twenty-five issue project.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a senior year thing. The civ, the civics project for them, for Shepherd Hill, I think it's a senior year thing. Pretty sure.
They have one project to do?
She's a junior, so she's probably looking ahead.
Well, good for her.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
Now, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion and we adjourn.
Sorry, Ken.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, vote for one, good night.